Very good, thank you Chief. This is Jason Perro, Chairman of the Northborough Board of Selectmen. I call to order this Monday, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the board. Have to get through a little bit of boilerplate as we normally do for these remote meetings. This is meeting, the Northborough Board of Selectmen being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which is posted at the top of our agenda for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. So that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public participation for public comment. This meeting is being conducted by the Zoom conferencing application as indicated on the agenda on the town website. In addition, the town website identifies YouTube live streaming link. Cable access government channels Verizon Channel thirty and Charter Channel one ninety-two and phone number one six four six eight seven six nine nine two three. That you can call to join the meeting by phone. On the agenda is the meeting ID and the password required to connect. The ground rules for the meeting. I, as Chair, will walk through the agenda, introduce the presenter for each item. After the presentation is concluded, I will go through the members of the board. And ask them to make any comments or ask any questions they wish to have. Remind the members who are participating in the remote meeting to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. And when you are speaking, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any responses, please wait until I, the Chair, yield the floor to you. If a member wishes to engage in colloquy with other members of the board, please do so through the Chair. And wait for acknowledgement before proceeding. I'll go over the items for public comment at that time. This is because this is a remote meeting, any votes that we take will be conducted by roll call. And I think that largely includes our requirements. So, to proceed with the agenda, actually, what I'll do first is walk through the meeting participants. When I call your name, please unmute yourself and indicate by voice your presence. First, members of the board, I'm Jason Perro, Vice Chair, Don Rand.
President.
Clerk, Tim Kalin.
Here.
Leslie Rutan.
Present.
And Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
We also have Town Moderator Fred George with us tonight, Fred.
Present.
Thank you. And for Town Staff Members, we have Town Administrator John Codere.
Present.
Town Finance Director Jason Little.
Present.
Public Works Director Scott Sharpentier.
Present.
Police Chief William Liver.
Present.
And Fire Chief David Parenti. Who is also assisting with the technical conduct of this remote meeting. In addition, we have connected Northborough Cable Access for the streaming link. And, or for the recording link, and we thank Kathy Dalgleish and Terry Cream for their assistance tonight. With that, I think we can begin with the agenda, first item, approval of June fourth, two thousand and twenty joint meeting minutes, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move you approve the June fourth, two thousand and twenty joint meeting minutes as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Julianne.
Aye.
Leslie.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
And I vote aye, the minutes approval carries unanimously. Next item, approval of the June eighth, two thousand and twenty meeting minutes, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the June eighth, two thousand and twenty meeting minutes as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Julianne.
Aye.
Leslie.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
And I vote aye, the approval of minutes carries unanimously. It's now shortly past the hour of seven PM and we have Jason Little, Finance Director. Request for authority to incur liabilities in excess of appropriations pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one. In response to the state of emergency following the COVID nineteen outbreak. Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'm here to ask the board to make this request to the DOR, basically so we can be allowed to deficit spend up to the limit set in your vote. So, as you know, we're legally bound to stay within the boundaries of appropriations voted by town meeting. But there's some very limited exceptions to that law. And snow and ice is one very specific exemption under Mass General Law, although that's a different law, that's forty-four thirty-one D versus forty-four thirty-one, which we're making this request under. So, per forty-four thirty-one, if there's a declaration of emergency, the board can authorize deficit spending to deal with emergencies without an appropriation by town meeting. So the steps to this would be there'd have to be a declaration of emergency made by the governor or by the board or both, in our case, it was both. Then the board would determine a threshold, in this case, we're asking for a hundred thousand dollars. I would then send a letter to the DOR requesting for this permission. And I'll do that via email, and once I get their response in writing, which will come by email, we'll have the authority to have a deficit balance. So, the reason we've not sought this permission earlier in the COVID nineteen crisis was that we've accommodated all our expenses within departmentals. Available budget, so currently, we don't have any deficit balances. We've got approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars of expenses we've been tracking for the purpose of applying for federal reimbursement from various grants from. However, those expenses have lived within various departments' budgets, so no deficit at this point. The reason for this request is that the DOR has released a bulletin giving advice on how to close our books this year with with accounting for the FEMA and CARES grant that have been just released. So in the guidance, the DOR is requiring the town's move expenses over to a grant fund out of the budgets. And, once, once that is done, since we don't have the grant money yet from these various sources, we will have a deficit balance. So basically, this is just a temporary deficit balance that we want to carry across the closing of the fiscal year. And this permission would give us the ability to have that balance and not be negatively affected by that. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, Jason, if I understand, and just a question. Essentially, these expenses have been recorded under the departments in which they've been incurred up to this point?
Correct.
And now we're transferring those to designated grant.
Correct.
Or fund or something like that.
Correct.
Collect them in one place and those will be subject to the deficit treatment, I guess.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board, any questions? Leslie?
Yeah, thank you very much, Jason, do you know when FEMA, the FEMA and CARES Act grants are going to be settled and when, when do we have some idea, do you think of the ability to then submit to those?
Well, through the Chair. We will be able to submit for these grants on a rolling basis, the promise for the CARES grant is that, you know, we have to pledge that we're going to max out any other federal grant source before we ask for funds from the CARES grant. So, first of all, we probably be submitting most of these expenses to FEMA and it's, it's not likely that we'll get reimbursed anytime, like even be the DOR doesn't expect we'll get money before September.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie, Tim?
Just to be clear, this isn't, these expenses have already been incurred, correct, we're not spending new funds?
Correct, yes.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to make that clear so that people don't misunderstand that we're getting a hundred thousand dollar debt exclusion to spend more money, it's already been spent and we'll get reimbursed for it. Just an accounting procedure to allocate the losses to another account.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Very good, any other questions, board members? Seeing none, John, do you have anything to add?
No, just so that everybody's clear about our approach, so we're going to submit to FEMA first, Federal Emergency Management first. And we expect a seventy-five percent reimbursement, and then the goal is the other twenty-five, which if it was a normal emergency, we would be responsible for that twenty-five percent. But under this, we're going to take and we're going to go and take that twenty-five percent that we don't get from FEMA and we're going to seek recovery of that through the coronavirus relief fund. And that's the process they want us to follow, so we should be a hundred percent whole on these. So any expenses, because FEMA has its own rules, so any expenses that don't qualify there, we then would seek under the coronavirus relief funds. But Tim's comment earlier is spot on, this is really, this is a housekeeping accounting thing that we need to do tonight because we're going to have this, these funds, these expenditures now placed in a separate grant fund, which obviously doesn't have a revenue source coming in just yet, but we anticipate one will. But the key here is that we have to seek reimbursement through FEMA first and then the federal funding secondary, and we hope to get a hundred percent reimbursement for this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Any other questions by the board? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to authorize the Finance Director to make a written request to the state for permission for liabilities in excess of fiscal year two thousand and twenty appropriations for no more than a hundred thousand dollars pursuant to Mass General Laws forty-four, Section thirty-one, to respond to the COVID nineteen virus.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Julianne.
Aye.
Leslie.
Aye.
Tim.
Aye.
Don.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Jason, appreciate the update. Now past the hour of seven oh five, and we have Fred George, Town Moderator, consultation with Board of Selectmen regarding date and venue options for town meeting. John, would you like to start off just to kind of set the table for the discussion, please?
Sure, I would, I would be happy to, Mr. Chairman, so at your last meeting, we had discussed an approach to holding town meeting inside that complied with all the social distancing. We did look at a number of options and we were trying to find a venue that we could control the most number of variables in. So we also did receive quite a bit of feedback from folks, a number of board members as well, who felt like an inside meeting wasn't something that they were, were interested in doing. So the staff immediately went back out, we looked at a hybrid model, looking at it partially inside, partially outside. And then we went back and we revisited an outside venue altogether, so we have spent good part of the interim time since your last meeting looking at options so that we could present something to you tonight. At this point in time, we do have a full outside option, it would be in the football field. As you know, we expressed some concern early on about the, some ADA compliance issues there. Working with the Superintendent and DPW, we believe we can make modifications to that to that site that would then allow us to be ADA compliant, unlike a, say, a graduation where they know who's coming and people can make arrangements ahead of time. This is an open town meeting, any registered voter can show up, so we need to be able to accommodate folks in terms of that compliance. So we had several staff meetings and looking at the logistics as recently as this afternoon, we had a meeting with Public Safety and the Moderator and the Chairman was there as well. To go through that potential option for us, and so, so at this point in time, we feel as though we can do the outdoor venue, if that's the preferred choice of the board and the moderator. We think we can do it safely, it does have a number of variables that we don't control. The most important one, which is weather. But, but we believe at least on the ADA compliance issues and some of the other logistics that were problematic with some of the other approaches that we were looking at, we believe we can overcome those. Public Safety would map out appropriate circulation, work with the town clerk in order to get check-ins. And the field could accommodate as many people essentially as we would anticipate ever showing up to town meeting. So, the one thing is an outdoor meeting, as I said, the weather, if it doesn't rain, it will likely be warm or hot. But, but that is an option that we can, we can put on the table at this stage, if that's something that the Board of Selectmen is interested in pursuing and the moderator is interested in pursuing. So there are a number of, you know, details of logistics that we can work out, but on the larger scale, that would be an option. We were looking also at a hybrid model, possibly with some meeting in the gym and then with overflow or a secondary option with folks in the parking lot, the logistics of that. Once you're outside, you're outside, so you're, in staff's opinion, we'd be better off to try to get an entirely outside approach, which we believe we have mapped out at this point in time, so we did spend, as I said, we spent several hours today going through this and as, again, the moderator was there. And really, at the end of the day, this is, this is his call in consultation with the board. But we've now put an indoor option before the board, we have an outdoor option. The hybrid, I don't think will, logistically, will be too problematic, too problematic for us, so I'd recommend either the all indoor or the all outdoor option, that we can make either one work, whatever the pleasure of the moderator and the board is.
Okay, thank you very much, John. Town Moderator Fred George, would you like to offer your comments and ideas?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman, certainly, first and foremost, I want to thank all of the people that really have been involved in this long and arduous process. To make sure that we have what I think is the safest possible method for having a town meeting and still have it be an effective town meeting. So, so I really appreciate all the effort that has taken place thus far and the effort that will take place going forward until we have the meeting. That being said, as, as the Town Administrator mentioned, there was a, a great deal of effort looking at three options as far as what was going on. The, the, I'll go over the hybrid option first, with the majority of the population of town meeting being inside, but those that chose to participate in the town meeting would be outside. Logistically, could be a potential nightmare making sure that, you know, everyone was able to hear and see what was going on at the same time. So, so from that standpoint, good idea, but not as practical as, you know, once, once you began to peel back the layers of the onion, not as practical as we thought initially. There, there were several outdoor options that existed, but because of the need to be sensitive and aware of the fact that this is an open town meeting. So therefore, everyone should have access to it, so ensuring that we had access, it turns out that the football field at El Gonquin is the best option that we have. Is it perfect? I don't think there's anything that's perfect that's, you know, so far from what our practice has been in the past years. But it's, but it can work and it can work for everyone. As, as the Town Administrator mentioned, there will be some slight modifications made to that area so that it will be completely accessible to all people. We will try to make as many, as much effort as possible to ensure that people can come into the, into the area in an orderly fashion. Will have plenty of space, so social distancing will not be a problem. And I understand the Board of Selectmen has already guaranteed that they have control over the weather and the weather will be absolutely perfect on the date of the meeting. So I appreciate that effort as well. The location we've mentioned. We also want to make sure that people have enough time to be able to plan for this, so the original date of June twenty-second is not practical. Having it outside also poses some problems, those problems are it will have to be on a Saturday. And, you know, we've typically had it on a weeknight, I don't think having it in the summer months at night outside is feasible in any way, shape or form. So, so it would be during the daylight hours and would be in the, the date that looks best for everyone involved so far is July eleventh, Saturday, July eleventh. My preference and recommendation is that we look at starting it early enough in the day so that we're not all standing out there in the, you know, peak heat time of, of the midday and afternoon. So, recommend a start date, a start time of either nine AM or nine thirty AM. And running for a period of approximately three, three and a half, maybe four hours maximum, so that we can get out of the heat. Or in the case of rain, get out of the rain and be able to, to have an effective and safe town meeting. There's also a need from a planning perspective to have a rain date. Even though the Board of Selectmen has guaranteed that it won't rain, we need to plan accordingly and have a rain date. And the rain date would be one week later, which would be July eighteenth. Why July eleventh and July eighteenth? A week before July eleventh is Independence Day. And I don't think we're going to have a town meeting on that day. So that, that is a, a time period that's far enough out that all the planning, all of the communication, all of the information that needs to be gathered can be put together by July eleventh. And we can have it in a safe and hopefully a, a place that everyone will, will be able to have an effective town meeting. Mr. Chairman, if there are any questions, I can certainly respond to them.
Okay, thank you very much, Fred. Members of the board, would you care to offer your comments, Tim?
That all sounds, sounds reasonable, my, my only question is, is there anything that we could do to reduce the amount of time? You know, three and a half to four hours in July heat isn't, isn't great, is there anything that we can do to condense package, cut that time down significantly?
Absolutely, I think that, you know, the, the consolidation of a lot of the, of the articles is a possibility to be able to reduce the, the time and presentations. Reducing the presentation significantly, so that, you know, people aren't sitting in the heat sweltering and, and listening to people go on and on. And, you know, from my perspective, I assure you that I have no desire to stand out baking in the sun. So I will do everything I possibly can do to make sure that the meeting moves along fairly well as well.
Okay, anything, anything that we can do to, to reduce the time, I think would, would go a, a long way to alleviate some concerns, I'm sure that we'll hear from, from residents, so thank you.
Thank you, Tim, Leslie?
Yeah, Fred, thank you very much and thank you to everybody who has been working on this, I know it's a lot of, again, a lot of work, a lot of coordination, a lot of measuring, I know on Scott's part and and there's just a lot of things to think about, and as I stated at the meeting last week, I was very uncomfortable attending a meeting inside. I do feel a lot better about this, I think it, it checks off all the, all the blocks here in terms of outdoors ventilation, it's a large enough space to be able to social distance. As John and Fred both said, accommodations can be made for people who may have some issues getting onto the field. Things can be done to prepare for that, I think, you know, there might be some circumstance, we can't satisfy everyone's issues and concerns, but I think in this case we have to applaud the efforts to try and do the best job we can to accommodate the situation and try and get this taken care of as soon as possible. And it does look like July eleventh would be the soonest date to make sure that we have all the proper preparations for that. I'm assuming then that, and I'm not saying that this is something I would even recommend, but this is not going to be a covered area, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just want to double check, obviously then we have the, the rain date, so people need to be aware that it may be warm, but I think we can't we just can't accommodate all the situations, and I think the feedback that I got and that I saw was that people were concerned about just simply being indoors and not having enough ventilation and sitting in an enclosed space like that. So I think the best we can do is say, hey, we're going to do this, but it's going to be outdoors, it might be hot, but we're going to be able to get the job done and we're going to do our best to condense things as much as possible. So I do appreciate all the work on this and I'm, I'm much happier with this solution.
Thank you, Leslie. Don, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, Julianne?
Yes, thank you, so, so in terms of the time that you mentioned nine or nine thirty, I would really go on the early side, nine AM, I, I think most you know, it's a Saturday morning, but we, we have to do it while the weather's a little bit cool, if it's a warm July day. And, and so in terms of seating, can people bring, there are, will there be a section where people can bring their own chairs, like if they have a chair that has an umbrella or?
John, would you care to address that?
Sure, so there's obviously a lot of details, what we'll, what we'll do is we're going to put together a communication that will instruct folks along those lines about what's appropriate, what would be not, not appropriate, so we don't want people coming with hibachis and having a grill or anything, but in terms of being able to bring their own chairs, yes, we, we will have chairs available and we will, we will designate the areas for social distancing. And then if folks have a chair that has a small cover on it or something like that, that would be perfectly acceptable. But the idea right now, tonight, there's a lot of details and a lot of logistics that go into this. Tonight, we just need, staff wise, we need to know if this is direction the moderator and the board would like to move in and then we can finish rounding out a lot of the details, but, but yes, you certainly, people would be able to bring their own chairs. There should be ample space for rather extreme social distancing, people can sit off almost as far off as they feel, as they would like to feel comfortable, so. It is a good venue in that regard, we just need to make, we do need to make some physical improvements to the place in order for it to, to comply, to, for us to be able to use it as such, but but we also have, as we would normally, you know, there'll be an ambulance there, there'll be a, a cooling station, a number of other things that we've discussed, but what will ultimately happen is we'll put together a good, working with the moderator, good clean communication for folks. And as well, one of the things that we want to do is have the handouts, the presentations in a handout forum, so that people be able to, to, to have those in front of them, because obviously in the, in the daylight, there won't be any PowerPoint presentations out in that field, so. I think it is important to try to streamline the, the, the meetings proceedings as, as much as we can, we would have liked to have reduced some of these articles, anything that could have waited, but we weren't able to, so.
Thank you, John. Anything else, Julianne?
That's it for me.
Thank you. Sorry, Leslie, did you?
Just a minor detail, I think, just something to think about, I'm sure people will wonder whether they can bring their own water and things like that, I don't think it's something that we probably want to be handing out to people. I'm guessing if it is hot, I don't know, because of the COVID, I don't know whether that's something we should be doing as an entity, but can, can they bring their own drinks?
If I may, if I may, I'd like to respond, I, I think that, as the Town Administrator mentioned, all those details will be put together in one communication piece that will have all of that worked out. And, and to be very candid, you know, those are things that have been discussed, but I think we need to give the staff and the team a chance really to put together the whole package so that we know all those details. We have, we have confused this process not because of what we've done, but because of what COVID has done, so that people no longer know what day town meeting is scheduled for. So I think it's important we get that information out to people first, that July eleventh date out to people, if, if there's agreement here this evening. And we also really nail down the start time so that people can mark their calendars and plan accordingly.
Very good, sorry, Leslie, you had one more?
Yeah, no, and, and that's understood, I'm just anticipating questions starting tonight, so.
Thank you, Leslie, Julianne?
So, so you mentioned that, that a hybrid town meeting is just not possible. But I, I'm thinking, I mean, if, if some, if it's really hot and people need a place to just find shade or, you know, an air conditioned room, is there going to be something available in the high school for that or?
Well, we got pretty clear direction that we weren't going to be in, that the board did not want to be inside, so no, it'll be outside, there'll be a cooling station, we discussed having a cooling station. There'll be a cooling station. We discussed having a cooling station.
Oh, okay.
But, but no, uh, I mean, I guess if people really wanted to go take refuge, they'd have to go back to their car, put the air conditioning on perhaps. Uh, but no, we're not making plans to open the building at all because that opens up a whole nother set of, uh, of issues for us. So. It would be entirely outside. Yep.
So, so are we bringing portable bathrooms on site?
Okay, uh, again, we'll get the details out, but just, uh, so there's a bathroom facilities there, uh, on the one end. And then we would introduce, uh, some handicapped accessible, uh, porta potties on the other end. So that, uh, folks with, that don't want to go down to the main facilities that are, are, that are available there. Uh, they can use the porta potties on the other side. So these are all logistics that we've, we've discussed. So.
So, you know, I, I understand that we're going through, you know, we're asking these detailed questions, but, but I think it's, it's important for the, for the board and the viewing public to, you know, because that's, those are the questions that they're all going to have, start to have now. And, um, if, if, if we, if we're not able to answer the questions to, to peo- to the way people would like to see it happen, then we would just have to think about a fall town meeting. So, um, you know, I, I, I appreciate that we are, you know, that we're asking and thank you for answering all of the, the kind of little details, but I think to a lot of people that's important. So.
Yeah, as explained, I mean, we're, we're trying to hit the high points at this point about what the options are and, and what we're leaning toward, I think, uh, for a completely outdoor meeting. There are still some details such as we've done with restroom facilities or things like that, that will need to be fully fleshed out. We do have adjoining the field, a small, uh, building there that does have restroom facilities and for the capacity of the crowd. We'll have something like porta potties or something like that to, to supplement that. Um, uh, I think we, in anticipation, uh, of, of postponing town meeting from the currently scheduled June twenty second date, I think it's realistic to suggest that we would be having another meeting this time next week on June twenty second. Regular Board of Selectmen meeting, at which point we could be providing some more of these details. So, um, it's, it's a plan in progress. We understand there are going to be continuing questions, uh, about some of these, but for the moment, I think that the, the predominant, uh, concern here is moving to an all outdoor, uh, venue. And, uh, essentially addressing the most serious concern that people seem to have, which is, uh, uh, you know, outdoor, uh, seating, outdoor ventilation, uh, perhaps, uh, wider social distancing for people who choose. And, and then filling in the blanks, filling in the, the other necessary details to, to make that happen. Leslie?
I think Julian and I are doing the same thing. I think that we, we understand that, you know, we're talking about the larger issue tonight, but based on all the feedback that we received, it's very clear that people are really diving into the details of this thing and I can anticipate what's going to be asked. And also this meeting tonight is our opportunity as Board of Selectmen members to ask the things that we are anticipating being asked and the things that we are concerned about. So I understand what you're saying about this being a bigger picture. But I think the people who are viewing this meeting need to know that we also have some thoughts about what might be going through people's heads. We all have different frames of reference. We're all hearing from different people. We're all seeing different comments. And I think we need to do as much as we can when we're on these meetings to make sure that we get everything out on the table. So.
Sure, yeah. Understood. Uh, any other questions or comments? Uh, Fred, anything more to add?
Uh, no, I, I think, uh, you know, certainly, uh, both Julian and Leslie, I understand exactly, you know, where you're at and having the discussion is helpful. Uh, but, uh, I, I envision that, you know, giving the staff and the team a chance to really interact with one another and understand where all the bases are and how they can all be covered. We need to give them a little time to be able to get into the very minute details. I assure you that every possible detail will be discussed in great detail and, uh, and will be considered. Um, but, but, you know, I push to say, let's, let's move forward on this. And, and I, I, I think the town administrator was with me is the longer we wait, the more difficulty it becomes. And, uh, you know, we wanted to, you know, get some information out. I wanted to be able to share this with the board and say, this is, this is where I'm coming from and this is why. But I also understand that, you know, s- the town meetings we've had in the past, a lot of that magic has happened behind the curtain. And we hadn't had to really think about those sorts of things. Now it's all out in the open, literally. And, uh, we're, we're facing, you know, all the possibilities and asking all the questions. So, so the questions that both Julian and, and Leslie asked, I have no problem. And I, I think that's just good, healthy conversation.
Thank you. Uh, Tim?
Um, if we do move forward with the July eleventh date, um, I am assuming that we'll have another, um, board meeting before the July eleventh date. Um, at that meeting, can we get an update on the progress of all these details? Um, so that the public stays informed?
I was, yes, I was just noting a short while ago that, uh, if we're postponing town meeting to a July date, that opens up next week, Monday, June twenty second, for another Board of Selectmen meeting.
Right.
Uh, and at that time, we can, you know, with, with the benefit of another week to think through and plan out some of the details and perhaps receive more input from the public, we can, uh, be better prepared to answer some of the more detailed questions we'll be receiving.
Yeah, I think that would work out well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Julian?
So when we, um, when we vote on this tonight, are we going to vote on the time?
Uh, yes, I believe we, uh, in setting the, the date of town meeting, you also have to set the time of town meeting. So would you like to discuss the time?
Well, my, my inclination is to go with, um, Mr. George's recommendation that we start at nine. I thi- I think, I think you mentioned nine thirty, but just, you know, for heat, heat consideration, nine o'clock, it would be my preference. I'd like to hear from the others, though.
Okay. Uh, other board members, do you have a comment? Leslie?
I'm in agreement with that. I think the earlier the better. Nine's reasonable. Eight would be probably a little bit pushing it, but, uh, I think nine seems good. Maybe hoping to finish up by, you know, noon would be great.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, anyone else?
Yeah, nine o'clock works. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Tim. Yep, that's fine.
And I, I'm fine with nine also.
Okay, well, let's make it unanimous. And, uh, I'll, I'll also advocate for nine, nine AM as a start time. Understanding that, uh, in order to get people in position and ready and have a quorum established, that means anywhere from eight AM forward, uh, people would be traveling to the high school, getting onto the field, getting themselves situated. So. Uh, perhaps somewhat more in, in fact, just getting, uh, checked in and registered. Um, so in choosing the nine AM start time, we're in, in essence, telling people, uh, you know, be prepared to start moving at eight AM to, uh, to, to be in, in position to get the meeting kicked off on time. Uh, but having said that, I, I certainly am in favor of the earlier time, uh, get us through, uh, the meeting as quickly as we can and avoid, uh, the heat of the day later in the day. So. Uh, any other comments at this time? Julian?
Sorry.
That's fine.
So, so as long as, so we're, we will obviously have a rain date, but I think we should also build in, um, if, if it looks like it's going to be a ninety-five degree day, maybe reconsider that too. It, you know, if it's, it's a day that's going to reach in a hundred by eleven AM, um, then, then I think we need to have a, an alternate date for that also. This is just another thing as you're considering, you know, all of the logistics.
Thank you, Julian. Uh, Dawn?
No, and I totally disagree with that. Um, I, I do agree with the rain date, but I don't think we can build in a temperature factor or a cloud factor or, no, I just think that we start early and the weather won't be as hot.
Thank you, Dawn. Uh, if we could, uh, perhaps briefly discuss, uh, consent agendas or, or managing to try to package up articles. Uh, Fred, could you just give us a little bit of overview about what that would entail?
Uh, certainly. Um, what would happen would be that, uh, you know, capital items would be one category. You know, the, the, the capital budgets, uh, you know, the general budgets would be another category. You know, the, the, uh, uh, Community Preservation Act, uh, you know, uh, articles would be all put together. Uh, and, and really one quick presentation for all of them, a quick overview and then a vote, uh, uh, on that. So, so really, you know, bundling the various articles that are really similar. Now where this can't happen is with planning board, uh, articles, uh, or, or zoning articles. Uh, they have to be individually, uh, considered and, and they can't be bound together.
Okay. And just so that people are clear, um, in constructing a consent agenda that combines multiple articles, a first step, in-town meeting would be to walk through the articles that are in there and to identify any articles that people wish to extract and treat separately. Correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so in choosing to bundle these together, we're not denying voters an opportunity to, uh, to treat an individual article, uh, if they wish to. Very good. Thank you. Uh, any other comments at this time? Leslie?
Yeah, just real quickly, just to clarify too, just because we condense some things, doesn't mean that anything else gets compromised. Uh, the integrity of the Warren articles are still there. I don't want anyone to think that something's being shaped off a little bit or modified in any way, just to get through it. So, just to clarify.
We're simply trying to streamline the process by requiring fewer votes.
Yes.
Uh, if, if, if that's the will of town meeting to do so, so. Uh, John, any, uh, any more comments?
Well, I think that, uh, I appreciate the feedback from the board at the last meeting. And, uh, you know, I'm glad that the staff was able to, uh, make some, uh, accommodations to be able to, uh, to be outside. I do want to thank the superintendent, uh, Greg Martinow for working with us on the, uh, some of the, uh, work that needs to be done out there to, to make sure that this works for us. Cause as, as it exists right now, it would not be, uh, an appropriate venue. So, uh, so once again, everybody's just working together. And, uh, I think it'll be a great location and we're gonna, we're gonna find a way to make this thing work and, and, uh, get everybody in and out safely and as quickly as we, uh, as we can. Um, so, uh, again, I'm looking forward to having town meeting and, uh, and being able to move forward.
Great, thank you, John. Uh, Leslie?
I just one more question. Um, are the bleachers going to be available?
Hmm, no.
Okay. I didn't know for social distancing if people could do the usual kind of spread around the bleachers. Okay?
No, no, the, the concept that we laid out, uh, tentatively is, uh, is the, the, the field is what would be used, not the bleachers. Again, there's some, some, some issues with using the bleachers as well.
Ye- yes, okay.
And town moderator Fred George, any final words?
No, just once again, I appreciate all the effort that has been put forth thus far. Um, and, uh, you know, it, it just is an indication that, you know, the teamwork that's necessary to be successful certainly exists. And I for one appreciate that.
Thank you, Fred. I'll just add my thanks to, uh, town staff, uh, uh, following last week's, uh, meeting, uh, we did receive, we had a lot of feedback saying that an indoor venue is not the way people want to go. And, uh, I appreciate the responsiveness of the town staff. Uh, John, Fred, um, our public safety people, our public works people, our school facility staff, um, all working together to, uh, try to, uh, make this work and to try to find it out there, uh, configuration that will, uh, that will get this done to people's satisfaction. So appreciate all the work. If there is, uh, if there are no more comments from the board, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mister Chair. I move the board vote in consultation with town moderator under the authority of chapter fifty-three of the Acts of two thousand and twenty to postpone the annual June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty annual town meeting, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty at nine AM with a rain date of July eighteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Julian?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so that carries unanimously. Uh, town meeting, July eleventh at nine AM. Uh, want to thank, uh, everybody involved and I want to thank town moderator Fred George. Uh, appreciate your, your help, uh, Fred. To, uh, make this accommodation and give us sufficient time, I think, to get the logistics mapped out and to get the information out for people to understand, uh, what will be happening. So.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
And we now go to reports. Uh, Julian?
Yes, so, um, so thank you to all the staff for reworking this, this whole town meeting scenario. And I would also like to thank the, um, the residents who, who emailed us. It was, was a nice, large response and I think you gave us a lot of direction on where to go. And, um, we just appreciate, we appreciate the input as we're making these decisions. So, um, thank you for all of your correspondences. And, um, the second thing I'd like to comment on is that I attended a water and sewer meeting. And I had, and I heard about something that I didn't know about, which is the Eye on Water, um, app, I guess you would call it, that's available for people who are on town water. So I don't know if you can see this, but if you, um, I guess you can't see it very well. Anyway, it is a, uh, it's something that you can sign on for on the, um, on the town website. And I'll read from it since you can't just see it very well. Um, so you can now view your hourly, daily or monthly water use from home or any internet accessible mobile device. Alerts can be set for many things, including leaks and high flows. So, um, I, it, the, it's pretty easy to find. I just went to that great little search bar and put in Eye on Water. And it sounds like a great program that people who are on public water might want to, um, take advantage of if you already aren't taking advantage of. I, I understand when it first came out, a flyer went out, but, um, this is just a little reminder. And Scott, did I, did I do justice to the program or did you want to add anything?
That was a fantastic summary, uh, Julian. The, um, the Eye on Water, um, portal acts, it allows customers to access, uh, their accounts through our online database. It's an easy signup process. I mean, as, as Julian said, you can monitor your water, you can see your hourly use in a twenty-four hour look back. Every one of our water meters in the entire system communicates with this database on a cell, uh, on a cellular text message every evening. There are a lot of alerts you can set. You know, every time we have a customer that reaches out to us asking about a water use, a bill, um, was there a leak? The first thing we direct them toward is Eye on Water. And, uh, every one of them that has signed up has appreciated it. So I, I, I welcome the calls and, and please sign up if you haven't.
Thanks. Um, and, and the other thing I just want to mention is that, uh, we did also receive an email about Carney Park. And we do get these occasionally. So Friday I took a walk over there and, um, and i- it's, it's, it's pretty amazing. I would say safely that the, the majority of dogs are off leash. And luckily there was a, a police officer there that morning and, um, but obviously the police can't be there to one, you know, from sunrise to sunset. So I was, I was wondering if we could set up a meeting mi- this summer, you know, when, when the schedule lightens up after town meeting with maybe the conservation agent, the, um, the animal control officer, the, um, maybe someone from trails to kind of just, you start from the beginning, see if they have any ideas, identify what land is actually town land. And maybe come up with a, with a plan that we can all y- y- agree on. You know, luckily the police chief is usually at our meeting, so it might be a time to discuss it. I, I don't know if my fellow selectmen have any ideas about it, but, um, you know, I think, I, I think we, we need to at least discuss it.
Uh,
And that's, that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Leslie?
Okay. Uh, again, this week I would like to thank everyone again for their continued work in preventing the spread of COVID nineteen. And primarily I would like to thank the police and fire department and all our frontline and emergency personnel. Um, this is really just such a surreal situation that we're all in and for such an extended period of time and I'm just impressed with everything that's being done in town. Um, I am also mentioning, uh, the Carney Park situation. I've heard from a couple of butters, uh, specifically who are upset because unleashed dogs run up onto their property. And in this one particular case that we heard about this week, a dog approached actually very quickly, um, a child who was outside in their yard. Um, I, it's, this is unacceptable. We, we've been talking about Carney Park now for a long time. And I know that, you know, we can't be everywhere at all times to monitor this, but I believe based on what I'm hearing, that Carney Park has become kind of the unofficial dog park. That's not acceptable. People need to go to our parks in town and know that they can walk and not fear that they're going to be run down or approached by a dog. That's not, that's not appropriate. Uh, it could be the nicest dog ever and I think most owners think that their dogs are nice, but the person approaching them may not know that. And they should not be walking on these paths and on these, um, in these parks in fear of that. And they shouldn't have to avoid Carney Park because of the, um, because of so many unleashed dogs that I understand to be there. So I guess I'm getting tired of mentioning this and it's, it's, this has gotten old and I'd like to know what we can do about it. In addition to what we are doing.
Uh, John?
Uh, actually, if I, if I may, through the chair, I'd like the police chief to speak to us. We've had many, many conversations regarding Carney Park and taken a number of actions, so it might be helpful to get an update tonight.
Yep. Chief?
Through the chair. Um, well, as of today, DPW has put a signboard at the top of the trail requesting that people keep their dog on leash. Um, we, uh, over the weekend, uh, I posted some shifts to, uh, go up, uh, and spend some time up there uh, with the officers, uh, as a kinda show the flag and let people know, uh, in a nice way that we will be enforcing the, uh, the leash law up there more aggressively and that it has been a while and people just aren't complying. Um, we had, uh, just today, uh, Officer Martin was up there on his, uh, mountain bike and he interacted with at least eight people. Uh, the dogs were off leash. Uh, two were from Shrewsbury, one was from Marlboro, five were from Northborough. So it's not just a Northborough park. It's not just a Northborough problem. Uh, it's, uh, it's just getting the message out. And, you know, again, part of the problem is that, uh, the park is not owned by the town, as you know, it's DCR property. Um, and actually there's no town property that I'm aware of that is up there. Uh, if the parking area where we, where, where people park is owned by the gentleman owns the, uh, office building off to the right and through an agreement, he allows, uh, town folks to, uh, the townspeople to park there. Um, so it's, it's basically private property and state property, which brings in, uh, some enforcement issues for me. Uh, I've been, uh, reaching out, uh, I've, I reached out to the person that's in charge of the state portion of the property. I'm waiting for him to call me back. He asked if they will request our assistance in enforcing law up there. Uh, because they actually have park rangers and we have been told in the past that they don't want us up there doing any enforcement. But their park rangers only patrol there once a week and that's not acceptable either. So, uh, perhaps with, uh, animal control, with support from our officers, uh, we'll be able to do a little bit more than, than what's been done.
Okay. So. Yeah, I do appreciate all that and I think that's, that's, that's great. Um, I, it's funny, the comments I'm hearing are things though that, you know, the dog, uh, when the dog officer goes there, that people basically disregard that person, that there's no respect for what, what they have to say. There's a cavalier attitude, I think, going on and I think it's totally inappropriate. And how far back does this go? We've been talking about this. This is ridiculous. So I think what you said, chief, about waiting to hear back about whether or not the state would request, um, our enforcement help would be pivotal. That, I think that would be terrific. Um, I'm also wondering, um, if it's okay with you and John, if in your reports that you give us, um, whether you could mention the Carney Park enforcement as one of your categories, just to report on how that's been going and whether or not people are seemingly adhering to what is being asked of them when your department is up there.
Do that.
Okay. I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you, chief, for doing that. Um, also, uh, last week I had requested that the proclamation for the twenty twenty seniors be sent to the superintendent. And I understand that it has been and he's going to, I guess, be bringing it up to the, uh, regional school committee. Um, at their meeting, I'm not sure if it's this week or next week. Uh, which I think it's great if it could go up onto the, uh, district website, um, Asvet Valley, cause I think it's a wonderful, um, proclamation that was put together and I thank you very much for that. And next weekend, not next weekend, two weekends from now, the weekend of June twentieth is the, uh, Louise Hool Annual Town Cleanup. Um, there are a lot of great areas in town to, to clean up, um, bags and gloves, contactless, um, bags and gloves can be picked up at two different locations. Uh, you sign up online for the area that you want to, um, do work in and then, um, you find out later, I guess, where DPW will be picking up the bags, um, on the, that Monday after that.
Yes, we will. We frequently receive an email kinda listing out what parks and what streets were picked up and we picked them up on Monday.
Okay. That's great. Thank you very much. That's a great event. And I thank the Community Affairs Committee for organizing that and, um, yeah, last Friday I attended another MMA webinar and they're always very helpful with the MMA president Jeff Beck with providing updates and uh, kinda just, just different legislation that's gone on to enable cities and towns to do what they need to do during this, um, crisis. So that's always, um, very insightful. That ends my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved in this, uh, town meeting process. Um, I know, um, John and DPW and everybody came with, came, uh, last week with the one option. Um, we had a discussion about it, went back out to the public, heard from the public. And this is just the type of process that I, I, I love to see us taking because we, we take all inputs, um, including from, from the community and come up with the best solution that, that seems to work. Um, great for everybody. Um, I also think it's a lesson too, that, that if, if residents do wanna be heard, um, they, if you, if you just email us, we, we get the emails, we, we, we hear you and, and we respond and we take your comments, recommendations and concerns very, very seriously. Um, and we, and we do our best to act upon them. Um, you know, I get a, a bit, um, disenchanted sometimes with, when people make comments on closed or private Facebook groups and you hear about them third hand from other people. Um, and nobody ever reaches out to anybody on the board or at town hall about any of their concerns. And we can't, we can't do anything unless we're informed that there's an issue and i- i- that people are having a, a challenge. So, um, you know, going forward, I just ask people if you, if you, if you know somebody that's a need or if you know a service isn't being met, um, you know, comments on Facebook or, or social media are, um, not very helpful, um, for us anyway. Uh, if you could just let us know, um, that way we can take action and come to some, some solutions, um, that would be enormously helpful. Um, during last week's meeting, I made a, a statement on the Black Lives, um, Matters Movement. And in that statement, I mentioned that I, I wanted to, the, to see some, um, the town takes some action to improve diversity and inclusion in town. Um, and I just wanted to let, um, people know that, that in my role as president of, um, the Renee Myers Company, a diversity and inclusion consulting company, um, that our company will be donating access to four of our online training courses, uh, to the town of Northborough. Um, those courses will be available to, um, town hall and all the departments located at sixty-three Main Street. Um, the police department, the fire department, the school department and the senior center. Uh, the four courses are Exploring Unconscious Bias, Fair and Effective Interviewing, Inclusive Leadership, and the Evolving Role of White Men in the Workplace. Um, I've taken all these courses. I myself am a bit biased because I was part of making them, um, but they are excellent courses. They are used by, Fortune one hundred companies and organizations all across the country, um, and they are always very, very well received. Um, and I hope once we get them set up, they're all mobile, computer-based, so you need watch on your phone, laptop, uh, computer. Um, just strongly recommend that individuals in each department, especially those in leadership positions, um, take some time to watch the courses. Um, they're all thirty to forty-five minutes. Um, and I'll have more updates as, as we get those, uh, hopefully set up, uh, as we move through the summer. Um, I also wanted to mention too, that I am working on a official statement from the Board of Selectmen. Um, I will have that ready, uh, next week. I plan on having it done this week, except it's been a very hectic week, um, for me outside of my selectman's role and just didn't have the time to get to it. Um, but I did, I did wanna thank, um, Chief Liver for the statement that he released. Um, very well done. Um, and I appreciate everything that you said in that. It's, it's, sends a very clear, uh, message to the community, what, what our police department stands for and it, which is very, um, in a way, it's unfortunate that it has to be said, um, but it's also necessary and important, uh, what you did say, chief. So thank you very much for that. Um.
Uh, Tim, if I could, along that line, I contacted the town moderator Fred George this afternoon and asked him to work with you, uh, in, in collaborating on, on that statement.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Excellent. Good. You just reminded me of something else that I was gonna mention too. Um, if there's anybody in town that wants input into the statement, um, has any experiences in town they wanna share, um, please email me and let me know. Um, I'd love to have a conversation with people in town if they wanna be involved. Um, and lastly, um, our election is coming up on June thirtieth. Um, people can vote right now. You can vote by mail. Uh, you'll be able to vote in person on June thirtieth at Mellick Middle School from twelve to seven. Um, all the information's on the town website. If you have not voted yet, um, please vote by mail or please vote in person. Um, it's just a local, it's, it's a, a, a local election. Um, it's very important that people vote. This will have an impact. Um, so please take the, the few minutes and, um, get out, vote. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, Dawn? Uh, looks like Dawn is having technical difficulties with her connection to the meeting. Chief, do you have any assistance?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, she's been in and out for the last, uh, fifteen minutes. Keeps coming in and going out. Uh, I just asked her to unmute again, but no, no luck.
Uh, okay.
She's back.
Hi, Dawn, we can hear you. Are you there? Hello, Dawn? Hello, Dawn, can you hear us? Chief, would you be able to mute that?
I am just getting ready to.
Yep. Okay. Uh, I'll, I'll just proceed, uh, uh, with the report. Uh, as mentioned, uh, Selectman Kalen has, uh, kinda taken the lead in crafting a, uh, statement on, uh, Black Lives Matter and the George Floyd incident, uh, one of many incidents that we've observed over the last few weeks and last few years. Um, I've also invited, uh, uh, town moderator Fred George to work with Tim in collaboration with that. Uh, we have had some inquiries about why the board has not yet made a statement. Uh, I do thank, uh, Police Chief Lider, um, uh, for having, uh, uh, put out the police department's, uh, statement, which I thought was very eloquent. Um, the board is following up, uh, and we will have something, uh, in place. Uh, I would like to think, uh, next week. Um,
Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Ms. Rain is back in.
Hello, Dawn. Welcome back.
Thank you.
I think, uh, that actually does conclude my report. Dawn, would you like to, uh, offer your report?
No report.
No report this evening. Very good. Uh, that will bring us to public comment. And before we begin public comment, let me review, um, the procedure here. We have some people connected in on, uh, the Zoom application and I do see some hands up. We will be coming to you very shortly. Um, the public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Uh, we'll have you, uh, connected one at a time. Uh, you won't be on video. Uh, you, you will be connected here though. We'll have you on audio. And we'll ask you to, uh, please first identify yourself by name and address and then, uh, uh, you can proceed with your comment. So. Uh, looks like, uh, instead of two hands, I'm down to one hand. So, uh, we'll go to Dick Sui. Hello, Dick?
Yes, hi.
You unmute? Yep. Could, please state your name and address.
Yeah, uh, so Richard Sui in, uh, Brewer Street, Northborough. Just wondered whether in town meeting had considered some sort of virtual aspect, uh, as this meeting here is virtual. That would solve a lot of the problems with heat and rain. Um, the Apple Developers Conference, which is being held in a week, worldwide conference is being held all virtual. So I guess I'm wondering whether some sort of hybrid or inclusion of, uh, virtual aspects of the meeting could, could be considered.
Thank you for your question, Dick. I'll turn that one to, uh, town administrator John Codere.
Yeah, so we, we, we've gotten this. Uh, the short answer, uh, Dick is we can't. Uh, we legally cannot. So you might've read, uh, some of the, uh, legislation that was recently passed allowing for a virtual town meeting. Those are representative town meetings. So it's a set number of representatives. It's easy for them to, uh, to set up and work that. We have an open town meeting form of government. There is no legal, uh, uh, way for us to have a, a virtual open town meeting by law. So that's the short answer. Uh, logistically, that would be very difficult, but, um, but under the law, we are not as open town, uh, open town meeting form of government allowed to do that.
Uh, any other questions, Dick?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, uh, have another hap- uh, hand up, uh, Apple Lynn, uh, I'll, uh, bring you into the meeting. Please state your name and address and then you're free to comment.
Hi, my name is Apple Lynn. I live at fifty-nine School Street, C six in Northborough, Massachusetts. And I just wanna express my frustration to see real concerns presented by Julianne and Leslie about an outdoor town meeting in the middle of July on the Algonquin football field get brushed over and overlooked. Julianne asked, can we consider a backup date in case it's too warm if it's scheduled to be a ninety or a hundred degree Fahrenheit day? And you guys oppose that. You oppose that common sense. And most of the attendees of town meetings are senior citizens. So my question is, how can you guys be so negligent? If you guys can't provide adequate accommodations, the push the town meeting to fall.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, do you have any, uh, other comments you wanna offer?
Nope. Are you all the rest of my time?
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, John?
Yeah, just a, just a comment, uh, because I, there is a little bit of misconception in terms of timing of town meeting. Pushing town meeting to the fall means that certain, uh, we, under, with regard to Asavit, uh, park renovations, we're under court order to do that. Uh, and several capital pro-
we're under court order to do that in several capital projects. So, postponing to town meeting to the fall would mean that several projects that are time-sensitive wouldn't be able to take place. That's why there's a, a desire to hold a town meeting now, that, just, so people understand that. It's not simply if you postpone the town, town meeting to fall, that everything is, you know, business as usual. It's not. There are several, can, several capital projects in particular that would be impacted by that. So, just want people to know that.
Thank you for the clarification, John. Is there anyone else on the line who would like to offer a public comment? Maryam Ibrahimie? Yes, could you please state your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Maryam Ibrahimie. I live on nine oh two Bay Drive. I was one of the organizers of the Black Lives Matter protest a few weeks ago, a few days ago. I just wanted to share the concerns and opinions of my fellow organizers as well as the attendees. As members of the Board of Selectmen of this town, I think it would be a really great idea to facilitate or organize a town discussion about some of the things that we brought up at the protest. I would love to communicate with members of the board about anything about the statement that you talked about or talk about how we can move forward as a town to talk about proper black history in our school curriculums, as well as talk about the police budget. I think when we speak about defunding the police, it does not mean saying that the police is unnecessary in this town or that we should take away all of the budget of the police. I think we have to sit down and look at everything that we're doing in this town for the people of color and the students of color and black people in this town. We have to look at how we're supporting them, and I would be more than happy to speak to anyone. As members of the board, I could forward my email. Let me know.
Yeah, there are a couple of things you can do. You can, if you go on the town website, if you haven't already done so, and go to the Board of Selectmen page, there are links to reach any of the Selectmen individually by email or to reach the board as a whole by email. So, please feel free to make contact that way and submit any information or any suggestions you might have. As we mentioned just a short while earlier, Selectman Tim Kalen and Town Moderator Fred George will be collaborating on producing a, kind of a cohesive statement on behalf of the Board of the Town. And if you have, if you'd like to be in touch with them, please feel free to contact them and, and offer your suggestions and concerns. Any, anything else?
That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your input. Any other comments? Apple Lynn, I'm going to bring you back in. It looks like you still have a hand up. So, just give me a moment. Yes, Apple Lynn?
Hi, so I just wanted to put this on the record. So, the Northborough Board of Selectmen will not consider temperature in a factor for postponing the town meeting?
I, I don't think we have decided one way or the other about that. As we said, the, the, many of the details concerning town meeting are still in the planning process. It's very conventional, I guess, to state it in terms of a rain date as, as a fallback. We, we certainly understand and recognize that July outdoors is going to be a hot event. We're trying to accommodate that, at least in part, by scheduling the timing of town meeting to be as early as possible in the day that's reasonable for people to be able to get to and attend. We'll have to see over the next week as we consider some of these details, what other considerations we might have to make.
Okay, so your answer is we will see?
I think that's the answer at the moment, yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And anyone else on, on the list here of attendees for public comment? Do not see any more hands raised. That concludes public comment. Thank you all for your, your participation. Which brings us to new business. First item of new business is assignment of town meeting warrant articles. So, typically, in preparation for town meeting, the board will go through for the set of warrant articles that it normally makes recommendations on and just kind of distributes the workload in terms of which, which of the Selectmen will be making the motions. I haven't actually done a count here, but two-five, seven is twelve. Eight is twenty, twenty-four. I count twenty-four. So, if we could distribute these roughly five each and give the chairman a break, only give him four. That would be great. So, why don't we just work down the list? I'm sorry, let's, let's make it an even twenty-five because I think it would be helpful in consideration of the efforts of the school administration, the superintendent, and the school committees. It's not necessary for the board to make a recommendation on the Northborough-Southborough Regional School District budget, but I think it would be a statement of support, if you will, if we were to make a recommendation on that one as well. So, I think that would bring us to an even twenty-five, five apiece. Shall we go down the list here? Well, let's just go down the list. Appointment of the Deputy Moderator, Dawn, is that one that you typically like?
Mr. Chair, I won't be on the board.
Yes, Ms. Rand, noted. We will have to distribute these among the other four board members.
Correct.
Very good. In that case, I'll pencil myself in for the first one for Deputy Moderator. Compensating balance agreement, any volunteers? Tim, thank you. Prior year's bills, these are very uneventful warrant articles. Julianne, there you are. Thank you. Town budget, I think I will assign myself that one. Water, sewer, solid waste enterprise funds, Leslie? And the article number seven, Northborough-Southborough Regional School District Budget. Leslie, would you care to make that one also? Sorry, you're on mute, Leslie.
Oh, sorry. Yes, sure.
Mr. Chairman?
We'll have you. Yes.
If I may, just as a point of clarification. So, these are the, I, I, if I understand it correctly, we're doing the assignment of articles. So, the assignment of articles are the motions that the board members will make, which is separate than your recommendations on the specific articles. So, on the Regional School Committee, it would normally be, it would normally be the school committee member making the motion for that. Just so we're clear, this is Selectmen's warrant. You can pick motions on any article that you want, but traditionally, we allow the school committee chair to make the motion on the regional school committee. So, so maybe we stay on the assignment of articles and then come back for your votes on recommendations on the, on the six articles that you would normally make a recommendation regarding.
Right. Very good. Thank you, John, for the clarification.
So, the next one will be revolving funds, Article nine.
Yeah, Article nine, revolving funds authorization and expenditure limits. Any volunteers? Julianne? Number ten, Appropriations Committee Reserve Fund. Tim, thank you. And stabilization fund contribution. Leslie, thank you. Now move on to some of the capital budget items. We have Police Cruiser Replacements. I'll be happy to pop myself in on that one. Town Offices Feasibility Study. Tim, thank you. Capital Improvement, Wing Mower Replacement. Leslie, thank you. Number fifteen, Loader Replacement and Repair. I'll be happy to do another. DPW Highway Garage Generator. Julianne, thank you. Number seventeen, Asbit Park Accessibility Improvements. Leslie? Number eighteen, Culvert and Drainage Replacement. I'll throw myself on for that one. Number nineteen, One-Ton Dump Truck with Plow. Julianne? And number twenty, One-Ton Pickup Truck with Plow. A very subtle distinction there. Tim, thank you. Number twenty-one, Road Improvements and Maintenance. Leslie? Number twenty-two, Water and Sewer Garage Construction. And I'll put myself in. Number twenty-three, Asavit Storage Tank Rehabilitation. Julianne? Brings us to number twenty-five, Consolidated Personnel Bylaw. I'll be doing that one. Number twenty-six, The Old Fire Station, Thirteen Church Street. Leslie? Number twenty-seven, The Cell Tower Lease, Barefoot Road. Tim? And number twenty-eight, Town Meetings Start End Time Change to six PM to ten PM. Tim? That was Selectman Kalen's foundation. I believe that takes care of all of our motions by the board. John?
Through the chair, if I just may, keep in mind, based on your discussion this evening with the moderator, if we do move to a consent agenda, this could change. So, we'll kind of repackage it up for you. The other thing is that a number of these articles will be, the motions will simply be to pass over them. We eliminated several of the capital items, as you well know, to bring our operating budget in at a lower level. So, a number of these will simply be motions to pass over. One of the consent agendas, and again, just preliminary discussions with the moderator, is all the articles that we've decided we're going to pass over, that would be a perfect consent agenda to move, and we can probably move a half a dozen or more articles in one motion and, and get rid of them. So, so some of this will still kind of be a, a work, a work in progress, so.
Sure. So, at the moment, we're proceeding with recommendations as though each of these articles will be treated separately.
Correct.
Yes.
Again, this is simply making motion. These are simply the board. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
This was simply making the motions. That's what we're talking about. When we talk about assignment of articles for people at home that might be watching, this is just the board making the motion that allows the, the article to come up for discussion.
So, those assignments have been made. Yes, Town Moderator Fred George?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I have double booked myself this evening, and I do have to run off soon, but wanted to double check before I did leave if there were any questions or any, you know, points that people wanted to, to share before I got off.
I think for the moment, we are all set, if possible. If your calendar allows the possibility of another Selectman meeting this time next week.
I will, I would look forward to it. It's so exciting.
Julianne?
I understand you have to go, Mr. George, and I was just wondering if, for the next meeting, if you could find out if the, through your Moderators Association, I think you told, told me about once, if the governor, it is, are there any other restrictions that the state legislature or the governor is placing on town meeting? In other words, are there any other recommendations that, that we, we would have to work within or should know about? Like, because, because somewhere I heard, and I can't verify this anywhere, that, that the governor might want town meetings done by August first. So, if, if we could get that information, I think that would be really helpful.
You were making, yeah, you made reference to the Massachusetts Moderators Association, and, and I've been in touch with them on a regular basis and will continue to do so. But certainly, as far as, as any specific timeframe, I have not heard anything about that. But you, certainly, that will be looked at, and I can certainly have more information in seven days.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to point out, in your packet is the sum total of all recommendations from the state regarding town meetings. You have that information in your packet this evening.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you, John. Thank you very much, Fred. Appreciate your being here tonight and helping us out.
Thank you all, and have a good week.
Thank you, Fred.
Okay, bye now.
Good night.
Take care.
So, this brings us to the recommendations on warrant articles by the board. We have, I believe it's six articles that the board makes recommendations on, and we can begin on the first page with article number four, the town budget. In order to expedite this process, I would like to invite a volunteer to make the motion to recommend approval and a second volunteer to second that, that motion. Then we can work through these a little more quickly. Dawn, if you wouldn't mind making the recommendations for approval for each of these? And Leslie, would you care to be the seconder for these?
Absolutely happy to do that.
Thank you very much. Dawn is in motion to get to somewhere where
She's leaving.
That's not the motion he meant.
This is the, the travelogue portion of our show. You're, you're, you're muted, Dawn.
Okay.
Let us know when you're ready.
Okay. Can you hear me?
All set, yes.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to recommend approval of Article Four Town Budget?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Article Four Town Budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Julianne, need to unmute? Yep.
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. Article Five, Water, Sewer, and Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we approve our recommendation of the Article Five for town meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. Article Six, Northborough Kid Eight School Budget. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we recommend approval of Article Six, the town budget, as a school budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. And then, as we described previously, it's not necessary for the Board of Selectmen to make a recommendation on the Regional School Committee budget, but as a show of support for the difficult circumstances that we've worked through very collaboratively and constructively in getting these budgets in shape under the current circumstances, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval of Article Seven, Northborough-Southborough Regional School District Budget. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval of Article seven, Northborough, Southborough Regional School District Budget.
Mister Chair, I recommend that we recommend approval of the North, uh, uh, Northborough, Southborough Regional School Budget, Article seven to town meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none. Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. Now turn to the third page, I'm sorry, the fourth page. Articles twenty-six and twenty-seven. Uh, Article twenty-six, old fire station thirteen church street. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mister Chair, I recommend that we recommend approval of Article twenty-six, old fire station, that town meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none. Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. And finally, Article twenty-seven, cell tower lease Barefoot Road. Do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, I move we recommend approval of Article twenty-seven to town meeting, the cell tower lease.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing none. Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Uh, Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. And, uh, if somebody's checking my note taking, I believe that concludes the articles that we recommend on.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you all. And as stated, uh, depending on how the warrant articles might be repackaged as consent agendas or something, we may need to revisit, revisit this, uh, if there's a different, uh, structure to how we recommend and, 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 uh, make our approvals. Uh, next item is, uh, approval to obtain deficit spending authority for continued operation for the month of July twenty twenty in the event of a delay in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget adoption as authorized by section five of chapter fifty-three of the Acts of twenty twenty. John, would you care to enlighten us?
Yeah, so, um, as we discussed earlier, originally town meeting was going to be held on June twenty-second based on the actions taken this evening by the board and the moderator, that now is going to take place on July eleventh. The end of the fiscal year is June thirtieth, uh, so we're going to cross fiscal lines, and this is something we knew may happen. And so, uh, there is a provision, uh, chapter fifty-three, the Acts of twenty twenty that allows a town, uh, due to the COVID nineteen, uh, emergency, if they cannot hold a town meeting or choose not to hold a town meeting prior to the end of the fiscal year, that they can proceed under, under, uh, clear, uh, guidance with a, what's referred to as a one twelfth budget. So as you sit here tonight, the K two eight school committee has approved and recommended, uh, their budget. The Algonquin Regional High School has, uh, approved and recommended their budget. The financial planning committee has, uh, approved and recommended the, uh, capital budgets. The appropriations committee has, uh, taken all of their action as of the eleventh. Uh, they had a meeting and they've approved and recommended, uh, all of the operating capital budgets and community preservation. This evening, tonight, the Board of Selectmen has taken their action to recommend the operating budget. So we have the fiscal twenty-one budget that would move forward. So essentially this evening in your packet, uh, you have a one twelfth, uh, budget that we would be looking to, um, uh, seeking approval for this evening. So under the process, uh, under the process, uh, we have to, uh, the Board of Selectmen has to approve the one twelfth budget. It then has to go to, uh, Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services to be, uh, approved by them, and we've on a preliminary basis, the finance directors already sent them, uh, what our one twelfth budget would look like in the form, uh, to make sure that it would be acceptable. And, uh, the feedback we got was, yes, that would be acceptable. Um, so again, just to remind folks, when we talk about a one twelfth mu- budget, it's not, uh, it's not the exact budget divided by twelve. We have a number of expenditures that we pay in the month of July. Uh, most notably, our Worcester Regional Retirement System, uh, contribution as well as our, uh, building liability insurance. So, um, uh, so those we pay, uh, in the month of July, the balance of the budgets would be roughly a one twelfth. And that's what we'd be, uh, seeking, uh, approval of this evening.
Thank you very much, John. Uh, questions or comments from the board members? Leslie?
Hi, uh, thank you. Um, there was just one comment that I saw somewhere, you know, because there's been discussion about this too, um, different places online. Um, is, are there any issues with the one twelfth budget in terms of the school department, for example, being able to order what they need for the year? How does, what complications are there with, with this?
And I'm sorry, for them to order what they need for?
Supplies, different things that they need for the kids if they are to be in session in the fall?
Um, I, no, we don't anticipate any complications and keep in mind with, uh, you know, according to the plan that you just laid out this evening with the moderator, we'd be holding town meeting on July eleventh, so.
Right. So that would be, that would take care of that. Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Uh, seeing none, uh, I'll just ask, uh, this essentially is an approval for the month of July. Depending on the progression here, if we actually get town meeting completed in July, we'll be all set. If it, for whatever reason, it were not to be conducted in July, we would repeat this exercise for the month of August.
You would repeat this exercise until such time as you can hold a town meeting to vote. Yep.
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Uh, if there are no other questions, um, do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to approve to authorize the expenditure plan as presented for continued operations for the month of July twenty twenty in the event of a delay in the adoption of the FY twenty twenty-one operating budget.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none. Julianne?
Aye.
Uh, Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Carries unanimously. We are good for July.
Month of July. Thank you very much.
Okay. Very good. Next item is a approval of NEDP memorandum of understanding. John, can you?
Sure. So, NEDP is a Northborough Extended Day Program. This is a, a nonprofit organization that, uh, the town has been affiliated with in some form, uh, for the last almost thirty years. And so NEDP operates the, uh, essentially the after-school programs in the schools. Their, um, their office spaces in the town hall building, they have one, they share one office. Uh, uh, and, uh, we have this arrangement where they, they, uh, we have this memorandum of agreement where essentially, um, they pay us, uh, an amount each year that covers their space allotment as well as, uh, essentially covers the, um, part-time admin. We have a nineteen-hour-a-week administrative assistant, uh, that Family Use Services and NEDP shares. So six hours a week of, of that is NEDP and the balance is actually benefits the Family Use Services Department. So the lion's share of the reimbursement is, uh, is for covering that position's cost. And so, uh, what we're re- recommending this evening is a four percent increase to that, uh, payment to the town, uh, which will take, uh, from fiscal, uh, twenty to twenty-one, it would be twenty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And again, this agreement and this arrangement has been in place, as I said, for, uh, twenty-nine years with town. So we have to do this on an annual basis and, um, and by fiscal year. So we're asking for your approval this evening.
Very good. Thank you, John. Uh, any questions or comments from the board members? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the town, I, I move the board vote to approve the FY twenty twenty-one annual memorandum of understanding between the town and Northborough Extended Day Program Incorporated for the use of office space and facilities at the town hall and to authorize the town administrator to execute same.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call vote once again. Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is the reappointment of special police officers. Uh, Chief Liver, would you care to speak to that?
Sure, it's, uh, Mister Chair, it's a, uh, annual reappointment of two special police officers, uh, Erica Abro of town and, uh, retired Sergeant Jim Bruce. Um, they're appointed for one year annually effective July first to June thirtieth, the following year. I'd be asking the board to reappoint both of them. They work good details.
Okay. Can you just, uh, describe the du- the, the, the duties of the special police officers typically?
Sure. Uh, basically, uh, they have full police powers, it's just that they're limited in that they direct, uh, traffic control. Uh, if there was a pinch and I needed them for an emergency for supplemental manpower, they, we can use them that way. They do have an hourly rate when they're working for the town, but that's very rare. Um, most of the time, it's, uh, doing construction details and, and, uh, working on the side of the road. We often, you also use them for, uh, like matron duties, so if we have a person that needs to be watched or monitored twenty-four seven if they're, uh, in a cell.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion? Uh, actually, at this point, uh, I just want to, uh, indicate, uh, uh, Selectman Rand, you have, uh, a relationship, um, with one of the potential appointees here. So my understanding is you're recu- recusing yourself from, uh, participating in this vote?
Correct.
Yep, thank you. Uh, so do I have a motion, Leslie?
I, can I just make a comment first before that? Yeah, I just wanted to
Oh, yes, certainly. Yep.
Thank both of these individuals for wanting to serve the community of Northborough. Both of them are wonderful individuals. Um, and I just think, I, in fact, I think I saw maybe both of them today on Route twenty. I'm not sure. I know I saw Jim Bruce. I'm not sure if Erica may have been there too. I'm not sure.
You haven't been to the office today.
Think she might have been out there too. Um, so I, I'm just very happy that both of them are involved with our, with our community.
Great. Thank you, Leslie. Uh, motion?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to reappoint James Bruce as a special police officer for a one-year period through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Julianne?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
And I vote aye. With, uh, Selectman Rand recused. And likewise, uh, do I have a motion, Leslie?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to reappoint Erica Abro as a special police officer for a one-year period through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none. Julianne?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, carries. Uh, next item of business, and I want to thank those two individuals, as you said, Leslie, uh, very valuable members of the community. And, uh, we certainly appreciate their stepping in, in this capacity to provide the flexibility, uh, that the chief needs, um, for, for the department, so. Uh, next item is, uh, next meeting date for the Board of Selectmen. I think what we can observe here is that having postponed town meeting from June twenty-second to July eleventh, that opens up June twenty-second for another, uh, possible meeting of this board, uh, on that evening. And I think it would be, in my opinion, in the interest for us to hold a meeting to provide an update on the progress, uh, of the planning and logistics for town meeting. Uh, would the board members, uh, be amenable to that? Uh, Julia?
I agree.
Yeah. Uh, Tim?
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, Dawn and Leslie?
I agree. Absolutely, sounds good.
Yep, okay. So, uh, by agreement, uh, next Board of Selectmen meeting will be next Monday, June twenty-second. And at that time, we will, among other things on the agenda, expect to have an update for the details, uh, uh, of the planning and logistics for town meeting to be held July eleven. So, uh, any other business come before the board?
No other businesses this evening, Mister Chairman.
Okay, I will, uh, first thank the board members for their participation this evening, and I will thank the staff members who are on the call here tonight, uh, also for their assistance and input. Uh, Chief Parenti, as always, thank you for assisting in the hosting of the remote meeting, and we thank Northborough Cable Act for their, uh, services to provide technology support and, uh, uh, ability to record and have this available for the, uh, citizens to view. If there's nothing more, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mister Chair, I move adjourned.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Good night.
Thank you very much.